Ready all set? If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss tenure recommendations, a personnel matter, and the school attorney, RFP. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Robert Teeger.
Willa Bear.
John Wallston.
Jody Madrow.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Christine Beck.
Catherine Natto.
Meredith Moriarty.
John McPhillips.
And I think we have some PIG students with us tonight. At the end of the meeting, there are sign out sheets that are up here at various points, and you guys just need to sign out on one of the sheets. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the December 21st, 2022 regular board meeting. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item three, meeting reports. First is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, just before the break, we received some information on new legislation regarding the firefighter and first responder tax exemption for districts and municipalities to consider, and I asked John to put together an overview in a very short time period to give the board an idea of what the board may want to consider as we move forward. So I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you Superintendent Monroe. Brittany, can you just grab the... Thank you. Before I start, just in the interest of full disclosure to the board and to the public, I am a first responder for the town of Bethlehem for the past 15 years. I would be eligible for any exemption passed by any jurisdiction, just in the interest of full disclosure. But so on December 9th, 2022, the chapter 670 of the laws of 2000 were signed into law by Governor Hochul, which provided for a 10% property tax exemption of assessed value for volunteer firefighters or ambulance workers. Tax exemption is available for each taxing jurisdiction, including school districts, counties, towns, fire districts, et cetera, and replaces the provisions of real property tax law for 66A through K. If anyone has dealt with real property tax law, it tends to be administratively cumbersome and particularly nuanced. The previous law had a number of opt-in clauses. Each of those sections had an opt-in clause based on county, which was tied to the decennial census numbers, and within those sections, not all exemptions were applied evenly, and in certain of those sections, school districts were prohibited from considering themselves exempt for purposes of any exemption of assessed value. So, the new law sort of threw out all those old sections, made it a little bit more uniform, providing for up to a 10% property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers, along with some other provisions, which I'll get to momentarily. The real impetus behind the legislation was really to ramp up as a recruitment and retention tool for the first responder community. First responder communities are really hurting for members, not only in the town of Bethlehem, it's a national issue, and this was passed in part to try to increase interest in the volunteer community. So, for eligibility requirements, the following provisions must be met. The property must be owned by the volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker, and must be the primary residence of the volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker, and located within the jurisdiction served by the fire company, fire department, or ambulance to which the volunteer belongs. And most importantly, the property needs to be used exclusively for residential purposes. If there's a mixed use component, it's proportionally broken out between that residential and non-residential. There's a certifying entity, which would most likely be the fire district or the ambulance company that would certify which volunteers or members of the applicable organization, namely the fire department or the ambulance company, would meet the service requirements. Some additional governing provisions. The tax exemption becomes permanent to the volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker after 20 years of service, so long as that individual remains within the fire district or the ambulance district, and maintains the residential property as the primary residence. The property tax exemption will be extended for the lifetime of a surviving unmarried spouse of a deceased volunteer, if the deceased volunteer served at 20 years and actually had the exemption in place at the time that he or she died. And in the case of an unfortunate line of duty death, the tax exemption would continue for an unmarried spouse. For the fiscal impact to the school district, there's really no direct impact to the Bethlehem Central School District. It does not negatively impact the ability for the district to raise, levy, or collect taxes. There is no impact on the actual tax cap, and would not negatively impact the district in terms of its operational needs or requirements. From a property taxpayer perspective, the actual result of the legislation would decrease the overall taxable assessed value within the school district, and as a result, the tax levy would just be distributed amongst a smaller total assessed value. The actual impact of the tax rate would be dependent upon the following. A, if the Board of Education adopts a resolution, and the specifics of that resolution, and the number of eligible volunteers certified by the fire department or the ambulance company. Where the residential property resides, between the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland, there's a little bit of a variance there, and whether or not the volunteer actually files the necessary paperwork. So, even if the board were to approve a resolution with specific provisions, it's still up to the actual volunteer to file the appropriate paperwork with either the school district or the town assessor's office. Recommendation I would have would be the town assessor, because only the town assessor's ultimately going to need that information as part of the process. As a fiscal impact as an example, some facts. The 2022 total assessed value for the school district was roughly $3.8 billion. That's B with a billion with a B. The tax rate per thousand of assessed value for 2022 was roughly $21.27, and for town of New Scotland, it was slightly higher because of equalization rates of $22.58. I don't have all the information just yet in terms of the total universe of eligible volunteers that would be incumbent upon the fire districts and ambulance companies within the town to sort of get that information, but I made the assumption that based on 225 eligible volunteers within the school district, with residential property assessed at $250,000, would result in roughly $5.6 million of non-tax exempt property becoming tax exempt. So, what does that really translate into in terms of dollars and cents? So, you got a little sort of back of the envelope formula here, where the actual property tax savings for Bethlehem volunteers would be $532, and again, because of the equalization rates, tax savings for the town of New Scotland would be roughly $564. That's on the property tax savings. New York State actually has a $200 income tax credit. You can do one or the other. You can either file for the property tax exemption or the New York State income tax credit. You can't do both. So, the actual net savings to any volunteer, based on the assumptions above, would be roughly $330. So, for the non-volunteer community, the impact is arguably negligible. The change in tax rate per thousand is approximately four cents, all else being equal. The actual impact to a non-volunteer in the town of Bethlehem would be $9.20 in addition to their school tax bill, and roughly 10 bucks for the town of New Scotland. Those dollar amounts would probably be even more negligible, given the actual increase in assessed value from year to year. So, taxpayers who aren't volunteers may not even realize any impact. Requirements by the Board of Education. Should they be interested in moving forward on this? A resolution by the March 1st deadline. That is a state deadline. That is the taxable status date under real property tax law, and by March 1st, the following provisions must, or things must take place. The board resolution that determines up to a 10% exemption, the number of years of volunteer service to be eligible. It's somewhere between two to five specified in the legislation. You can choose as little as two. You can choose as much as up to five, and the certifying entity for the exemption being the school board or the local assessor. Again, I recommend the local assessor's office. This is just a little bit more information in terms of the do's and do nots. Albany County did opt into the old law, but to get back to how I started in terms of some of the administratively complex, for Albany County, the exemption for school taxes was up to $3,000 of assessed value. So, when you did that compared to the $200 income tax rebate, the tax rebate was more lucrative for the volunteer community. Questions?
First, thank you for your service to our community. I appreciate it. Second, so if we adopted a resolution on March 1st, that would be in effect for this year, for this coming year?
I appreciate that question, President Dellenbaugh. So, my recommendation, everything works from March 1st actually backwards.
Okay.
Only because March 1st is the taxable status date, based on New York State law. Everything would have to happen for that, because you would need to get your resolution in place, public hearing held, along with the actual application completed, filed, and returned to the town assessor's office by any volunteer community, as well as the volunteer agency certifying to the local assessor the eligible candidates, all by March 1st. So, March 1st would be really, to me, the drop deadline, and I appreciate the time crunch here. I don't know if, when this was passed on December 9th, that they really thought that through in terms of the impact. School districts are the first out of the gate because of the way the calendar falls, and they would be the first entity up for the impact to any tax bill.
Mm-hmm.
Because the March 1st exemption deadline of the taxable status date would govern whatever exemptions for our 23, 24 school tax bill.
All right. And I think you answered the other question. I was going to... It does require a public hearing?
That I have to... I'm researching that. I do know when this body looked at the veterans' exemption, in 2019, there was a public hearing.
That's why I was asking.
So, I... But I'm not sure about whether or not that was sort of a good governance component, or that sort of tie to meetings or public officers law. That I just need to check on.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for John? Other... Hold on a second. Catherine?
I was just going to say that I also appreciate the conversation, but this impacts my household directly as well, so I won't take part in it, or vote on it, or anything like that.
So, you would need to abstain from any vote?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Or recuse yourself.
Other than the two to five year requirement, is there any other service requirement, like 20 hours a month, eight hours a month? Is there any?
Not specifically associated with this legislation. Fire districts do have other requirements for other benefits to the fire or ambulance service, but there's not the... At least my reading and what I've seen thus far from Tax and Finance and our Private Tax Service Agency, the provisions that are governing are the ones I sort of outlined.
Thank you.
The 225 volunteers, I think, was that... Are those actual... Do we get that number? Do we know that we have 225, and they all own a home?
So, I would not know until such time. This is sort of cart before horse, right?
Right.
So, before I could tell you what the actual impact would need to be, the volunteer agencies would need to certify the actual membership based on the resolution that you would pass.
Sure.
So, I made the best estimate, for example, I'm part of the Yeltsom Fire Company. I know that they have an active roster of 80 folks. Not all of them will be eligible. There's, you know, vacancies within that roster. I know other fire districts and ambulance companies are suffering as well, so they're not up to full capacity. So...
Educated guess, though.
Yep. As best as it could be. Part of what I was trying to sort of show is, on a $3.8 billion assessed value, based on those assumptions, you're looking at roughly a $5.6 million decrease in the assessed value, which associated with four cents on the tax rate. So, if it's a little bit more, maybe it's six cents, maybe it's two, but it's, in the end of the day, it's not a significant amount of money. And again, going back to, you know, it is something, but as a recruitment retention tool for the first responder community, it was something that the state passed.
Meredith, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I think you said this. I want to make sure I understood what you said, that the actual volunteers have to apply for this tax exemption by March 1st.
That's correct.
So, we actually would have to do this as soon as possible in order to give everyone time to get this done by March 1st.
That is correct. So, March 1st would be, and I'm not speaking for your calendar at all, so, you know, you have a meeting on the 18th.
I was just looking at the calendar.
So, and then, you know, the...
Well, so I was wondering about the public hearing piece of it.
And I will try to research that this week and get an answer back. I just don't, I did not have a chance to really look into that, and it may actually be more a question for our attorneys.
We have three meetings before March 1st, and there's still, obviously, if the board wanted to do this, you would need to decide, do you want to go out of the full 10%? You have to determine the years of eligibility required, and then we would have to obviously figure out exactly what the resolution would be in a public hearing. So, the timeframe is really tight.
Tight.
Regardless. Even if we move forward and you act on this, it still requires all the other first responder units to also do the same, correct, John?
Yes, but it's by the each. So, if, you know, the Acme Fire District didn't do it, then that's really on them.
So, one could do it, one could not do it.
That's correct. Yep.
But we have to do it first?
Yes, because otherwise, the assessor's office is going to be inundated with exemption requests to which an exemption does not apply.
Got it.
Okay. So, while it sounds like, I mean, I think that we need, because of the close, the time crunch, we might need to discuss it.
I mean, if you have, if you're comfortable coming up, you know, with the parameters are, obviously, we still have to do a little bit of research on some of the process and what's required, but we may be able to come back on the 18th. If there's a public hearing, we could do that, or it might have to be pushed back a little more, but... Or if you want more time to consider it, and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
I am trying to get a sample resolution, too, that would, you know, give some template or framework in terms of your wheras and resolve clauses. It's everyone sort of stirring here a little bit.
Scrambling a little bit.
It's just been a last minute passage, and then you took the holiday in there, so...
Sure. Well, I mean, our attorneys could also assist with drafting the resolution. So, what are the two, just...
Yep.
I know you were just presenting on it. So, we would need to decide the, whether it was between two and five years of service, and then there was one other, there's one other?
The actual percentage of the exemption, up to 10%. And then, I think, and I'll confirm this as well, you need to at least reference the entity by which would receive and determine the eligibility of the applications.
Okay. Your, what, the numbers that you had, were you kind of figuring out the impact?
Was, that was based on 10%?
Yes.
Thoughts? I'm definitely comfortable with moving forward with an exemption. I'd be interested to see what the other board members think in regards to a percentage. I think the amount is negligible, so I'm thinking the 10% is fine, and then it would just be like the two to five years. What would you consider? And I think because there is a shortage of first responders, I would be fine with the two for qualification.
I agree. Sorry. I think it's great. Sounds like a great program. I think that folks should be incentivized to help out the community and be rewarded in some small ways they do. So, do we have to vote on whether we're going to go ahead with this, or just go?
I think the official vote would be on the resolution itself.
I think so, yeah.
But it sounds like, I think if we have a general...
Yes, I'm very comfortable with the 10% and the two years, and I think you said you recommended that the local assessor would be the certifying agency.
Definitely.
I definitely want to, you know, encourage people to do this work, so...
Okay. Yeah, and I also would be comfortable with it. So, I would think if we can, you know, maybe reach out to the attorneys, or, John, if you could work with them as well, to come up with a draft resolution.
And then if we need to...
And then find out whether we need to have a public hearing. And we can kind of work back from...
Sure.
In terms of the, because I would like to do it, because there is that March 1st deadline for people to apply for it, I feel like the sooner that we could make it happen, the better.
Agreed.
Am I okay with that? All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I appreciate the openness to it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any other, any questions for Jody? With the break, I feel like we were just here, so I do not have anything to say, other than happy new year to everybody, and I hope everybody on the board and in the district was able to have some rest and relaxation over the vacation week, including you. Do we have anybody here tonight from the High School Student Senate? If you want to come down to the microphone.
Let me just bring out the outline of what I was going to say. Yeah, so, the latest, yeah, the latest from the Student Senate, we met just earlier today with actually Mr. Wallston, and it was a really interesting meeting. We discussed, along with a lot of other clubs in the auditorium, so it was kind of a special meeting. We discussed the, I'm sure he can go into detail more, but the Eagle Challenge, which will take place on the weekend of April 21st through the 23rd, and every four hours... on the weekend of April 21st through the 23rd, and every four hours, it's walking or running on a track to raise money with a goal of $60,000. And I can report from a Student Senate perspective that there's great enthusiasm among the student body for this. I expect the slots will fill up very quickly for every run, and I definitely expect that this will be a success. A lot of my friends and I are all very much looking forward to it, as is the rest of the grade and the whole school. So that will be very exciting, and we are all very pumped for that. So thank you, Mr. Walston, for coming in to present today on that, because that definitely helps spur kind of enthusiasm for that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
It was great. Thanks so much.
Awesome. Thanks. Do we have anybody from the middle school here tonight? Next on the agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come forward. Item five, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent of the Board of Education approve the following finance action item one. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say thank you to the BCCF for the donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent of the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through nine.
So moved. Second.
We definitely, we have a couple of retirements that are on here, including for Kathy Johnston, and we will, I think reluctantly, go ahead and vote on those. Thank you, Kathy, and to our, and to our other impending retirees. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through five.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one and two.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item six, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anybody visiting tonight who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is the time to come forward. Item seven, future meetings and events. Let's see. Next Wednesday on January 11th, here at the high school, we have our mid-year board retreat starting at 5:30. On January 18th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting, anticipating executive session at 6:00 and the regular meeting at 7:00. We have a policy committee meeting on Monday, January 23rd at 6:30, and then our meeting after that is on February 1st, is starting at 7:00, anticipating executive session beforehand at 6:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. And our PIG students, don't forget to come up and sign out on one of the sign out sheets.